Clerk Tamer, would you call the roll, please?
Park.
Here.
Udara.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Nardini.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Beremis.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Shenko.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Cahill absent. Tulludo.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Item two is public comment. Clerk Tamer, did anyone sign in for public comment on the Committee of the Whole?
No.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make comment before the Committee of the Whole that did not have an opportunity to sign in previously? Seeing none, we'll move on to business before the committee. Item A is review of the fiscal year 2025 budget. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with a brief introduction of the fiscal year 2025 budget and then proceed through public safety tonight. Hopefully we'll have enough time to-
Very good.
-get through that and questions. So I'm very pleased to present to you the fiscal year 2025 budget. The budget is the municipality's operational plan for the next year and for Elmhurst, an outlook for two years. The budget's organized in the manner of having summary information, line item detail of the proposed budget for 2025, individual fund balance schedules, budget and financial policies and procedures, and supplemental information. The 2025 budget consists of 16 different funds. The city's budget process allocates resources and prioritizes programs and projects, which is a difficult task each year as a balance must be struck between the cost to provide those services and the available resources, excuse me, revenues. To prioritize services and projects, the city regularly conducts a citizen survey and relies upon a strategic plan and goal-setting process. The department summaries goals and objectives included in the budget aligned with these strategic plan priorities. Sound financial management, traffic flow, stormwater management, maximization of city assets, and various other planning initiatives were hallmarks of the strategic, long-term, and short-term goals. The city has executed many of the strategic priorities over the last two years. Some accomplishments or items currently in progress include the update of the downtown plan, maintaining the city's AAA bond rating, implementing a financial plan for the city's stormwater fund, enhancing public safety technology, and conducting neighborhood traffic studies. The city plans and budgets to update the strategic plan in 2025. Regarding the capital budget, the city begins the budget process by distributing the five-year capital expenditure budget, also known as the KEV. The KEV is a capital planning process projecting capital projects over a five-year program. The city then overlays the KEV projects into the operating budget, making adjustments where resources dictate them. The Public Works Committee reviewed the KEV over the course of three meetings this year to understand the projects outlined in the plan. I'm going to turn it over to Finance Director Christina Coyle for some detail on the operating portion.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Manager Grabowski. I'm going to highlight some of the highlights of each individual fund in a little more detail before we get into the departmental budget. So I will start with our general fund. Our general fund is the main operating fund of the city. General fund revenues for 2025 total $79.5 million and represent an increase of $3.9 million or 5.2%. However, if bond proceeds are excluded, the increase in revenues will be $2.7 million or 3.6%. Positively affecting our revenues, sales tax, the largest overall revenue source in the general fund at $15.7 million, is budgeted to increase by $574,000 or 3.8% from the 2024 budget. The city has also budgeted to see an increase in building permit revenue of $500,000 due to anticipated commercial permits in 2025. Declining revenues in our general fund include use tax and our real estate transfer taxes. The city anticipates a decrease in use taxes of $765,000 due to sales tax legislation changes at the state level. A cooling real estate market has negatively impacted our real estate transfer taxes, which were once over $1 million, and we are now only budgeting to see those reach $680,000 in 2025. The proposed general fund expenditure budget for 2025 is $85.5 million, an increase of 2.9 million or 3.5% from the fiscal 2024 budget. Expenditures before capital transfers increased by 2.1 million or 3.3%. Of this amount, $490,000 is due to an increase in the required contributions to the police and fire pensions. Excluding those contributions, the expenditures before capital transfers increased by $1.6 million or only 2.9%. Capital expenditures increased negligibly by $191,000 or 1.2% from the 2024 budget. Notable projects in the 2025 budget in the general fund include the annual contract paving program and concrete street programs, new sidewalk on Crestview, Indiana, and Van Hagen, and a fire engine. The 2025 budget also includes $3.25 million for police station design engineering funded by bond proceeds. Recognizing that expenditures are greater than revenues, the general fund represents a deliberate use of fund balance of $5.9 million for a projected general fund balance at the end of FY 2025 of $13.3 million or 25% of expenditures. This balance falls within the city's fund balance policy goal of 25 to 33%. The chart on page 1-7 of the transmittal letter highlights the progression of the city's general fund balance. We have seen and we've been very fortunate to see many stimulus sources from the CARES Act and the ARPA funding, which have allowed us to fund many capital projects and operating costs. However, those funds will be fully exhausted by the end of 2024. Moving on to the city's motor fuel tax fund. The motor fuel tax fund accounts for the city's share of state motor fuel tax or MFT revenues. The city does have a local motor fuel tax, however, that is in our general fund, not the MFT fund. A shift in the MFT expenditures is proposed for 2025. Historically, the city has used about $1.2 million, or about half of the state motor fuel taxes, for salary and benefits for certain public works employees, and then the other half of the MFT revenues have gone towards street and road programs, primarily reconstruction programs. The $1.2 million that is left after those salaries and benefits does not meaningfully contribute towards the road program. What has alleviated that in the past years has been the Build America Bond funding that the city received, which allowed us to do projects such as the Brush Hill Reconstruction and the Park and First Avenue projects. And so we are proposing a shift in the 2025 budget to move those public work salaries out of the MFT fund and into the general fund to provide more dedicated funding to the road reconstruction program so we can keep pace with the projects that have been identified in the capital expenditure budget. New this year, you will see for the MFT fund, we have included five-year projections for that fund in the fund's budget, so you can see how the revenues that are coming into that fund align with the capital projects that are proposed. Moving on to the stormwater fund. As Manager Grabowski indicated, stormwater remains a key initiative of the city and was cited as an area to continue to work on in both the strategic plan and the citizen survey. A half a percent increase to the home real sales tax to fund debt service and stormwater projects went into effect January 1st of 2024. Securing this funding helped the city to continue our stormwater improvements. An upgrades to the McKinley Stormwater Pump Station located along Maybach Trail Woods will be complete in 2024. The city also purchased property in the Spring and Eggleston area in 2024 that will help area stormwater mitigation and provide customer parking for the abutting business district. In 2025, the city is budgeted to make repairs to the Yorkfield Basin Wall and to begin design improvements of the North Grawee Woods and the Spring and Eggleston areas. New this year, the stormwater fund also includes five-year projections, which highlight a longer-term view of the fund. Next, moving on to the municipal utility fund, or as we call it, the MUF Fund. Total revenues for the MUF Fund are budgeted to decrease by $5 million or 6.7% from the 2024 budget. This is primarily due to budgeted debt proceeds in 2024 of $34.9 million compared to debt proceeds of $30.1 million in 2025, and those are both related to the Bundle Five improvements at the water reclamation facility. If you take out those loan proceeds, revenues before debt proceeds are budgeted to mostly remain flat from 2024 to 2025. MUF expenditures are budgeted to decrease by 6.7 million or 8.2%, and again, this decreases due to capital projects. At the beginning of 2024, the city completed a water and sewer rate study, and rates were increased in March 2024 in response to inflation cost increases, needs to address aging infrastructure, as well as respond to unfunded state and federal mandates to remove phosphorus in the treatment process. In 2024, Bundle Five of improvements at the water reclamation facility began, and these upgrades will continue into 2025, and $30.1 million of improvements at the Water Reclamation Facility, or WRF, are included in the 2025 budget, financed through low-interest IEPA loans. The capital plan for the WRF includes $62.4 million in necessary investments through 2029. To respond to the city's aging water infrastructure, in the 2025 budget, $4.6 million is programmed for water main replacement. This will allow the city to sustain a 100-year replacement cycle. A sewer capital program of $3.5 million is also proposed. In the last week, the federal government did issue new EPA rules regarding lead pipe replacement that will increase our replacement needs. The city is currently reviewing those guidelines and will need to develop and implement a plan to meet the federal requirements. In summary, the city is proposing a balanced municipal utility fund budget for 2025, which does not currently recommend a rate increase to customers. It is important to balance the needs of the MUF while being mindful of the city's customers who saw significant rates at the beginning of 2024. The proposed budget maintains the hallmarks of the capital plan that were important to address in the rate study and does so without recommending a rate increase. Based upon these projections, the city will not grow its emergency cash reserve in 2025, a goal which can be reviewed during 2025 as the city prepares for rates in 2026. The city's Finance Committee is tasked with reviewing MUF rates and will do so to affirm the projections in the 2025 budget. Next, the city's parking fund. The city's parking fund was negatively impacted by the pandemic and the changes in commuting patterns. Commuting levels have still not returned to their pre-pandemic levels. However, this year, the Finance Committee undertook a detailed financial review of the parking fund with the goal of making the fund self-sustaining in the post-pandemic era. The committee issued a report, which was approved by City Council. The 2025 budget includes the hallmarks of that financial review and present a balanced parking fund budget for 2025. In July 2024, the daily rate was increased from $2 a day to $3 a day, and all other rates were increased proportionately. Parking charges for service are budgeted to increase 35% from the 2024 budget. Several capital items were shifted to the Downtown TIFF Fund, including the parking deck repair program and the electric charging stations. A transfer is also included in the 2024 estimated amounts to permanently forgive the interfund loan of $1.6 million that the general fund was owed by the parking fund. And last but not least, the city's TIFF Funds. The city has three TIFF Funds that have budgets for 2025. Again, this year, the TIFF Funds you will see do also have five-year projections to provide a little more long-term view of those funds. Some items included in our TIFF Fund this year for our North York TIFF, the 2025 budget includes two sidewalk projects. The first is the North York Sidewalk Improvement Projects, which constructs sidewalk along the North York corridor between Lake Street and Crestview Avenue, including adjustments to I-290 bridge abutment. Federal grants contribute $1.53 million towards this $2.6 million project. And the second project in the North York TIFF adds new sidewalk on Crestview at a cost of $450,000. For the TIFF V, or our Church Road Lake Street TIFF, industrial concrete street resurfacing is planned for 2025. And our last TIFF, TIFF VI, or our Downtown TIFF, the budget includes continuing engineering of the metro station improvement project anticipated to begin construction in 2026. The total cost estimate of this project is $44.1 million, offset by $35.1 million of grant funds. City staff are still working to secure additional grant funds, and any balance that is not funded by grant funds will be funded through general obligation bonds. As we move into our detailed department presentations, we will go into these funds and these departments in more detail, and I will turn it back to Manager Grabowski.
Thank you, Director Coyle. In 2023, the equalized SS value, or EAV, in Elmhurst, excluding the TIFF areas, grew by 5%. Of this amount, 3.8% represented base growth of existing properties, and 1.2% represented new construction. The average growth over the past five years is 4.3%, which is the number that we used for the levy for estimated growth. The city has seen residential real estate cool in 2024, as Director Coyle mentioned, as rising interest rates and low inventory have negatively impacted the housing market. However, as part of the O'Hare submarket location, Elmhurst Business Parks continue to be highly sought after. The city's industrial vacancy rate is 0.3%, lower than the DuPage County rate of 3.7%. And also, offering multiple shopping districts throughout the community, Elmhurst is likely highly sought after for commercial users, where the city's retail vacancy rate is 1.3%, which is better than the DuPage County average of 5.4%. Our transit-oriented developments in the downtown city center remain popular as well. In 2024, The Vine opened, offering 204 luxury residences downtown. And continued new development helps to grow our property tax base and diversifies the property tax liability of all of our local governmental units. This fiscal plan continues the city's capital program, continues investment in economic development to promote Elmhurst growth, maintains the current level of city services, and maintains the general fund levels within fund balance priorities and policies. Presented is a sound fiscal plan for the city of Elmhurst for the next fiscal year, and I request the Council's positive consideration. I would like to thank the City Council for the responsible manager, excuse me, manner in which you oversee the finances of the city, and of course, I would also like to thank the Finance Department staff, along with the department directors and other management staff for their input and collaboration during this budget process. Mayor, I'd now like to start with the individual budgets, but we're happy to answer any questions prior to that.
Are there any questions before we get started? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So with respect to the transfer tax, you mentioned higher interest rates, low inventory. I actually didn't think of that, so I'm assuming people aren't moving? I mean, is that how I interpret that?
Certainly, houses, there's not, obviously, not as many houses for sale, low inventory. The ones that do come on the market turn over quickly and at asking price, but with high interest rates, I think that's discouraging people from taking on new mortgage debt, and so that, from what I've read, is what is hurting the housing market.
Okay. So not that I expect you to speculate, but with interest rates coming back to earth, you know, is, do we anticipate that this transfer tax has sort of correct itself in the future? Or has it been damaged over the next several years due to inflation and the cost of a house?
So I can't speculate on the future, but I can, I can say we've budgeted to maintain 2025 at 2024 levels. While there's been talk of interest rates going down, I've also seen several articles that said that's not positively moving, mortgage rates down as well. So we've tried to conservatively budget 2025 at the 2024 level. Certainly, if the housing market does come back, that will just positively benefit the general fund.
Okay, thank you. I just have a general comment. So just looking at the general fund and seeing this, you know, end 2025 at 25%, and then it go all the way down to 11% in 2026, you know, the written text here says that we need to deal with that in 2026, but it feels like maybe we should start thinking about how we end 2025 at a higher number, if possible. So anyways, it's just sort of alarming how quickly it drops just a year out, and so as we go through this process, that's, I'm going to be looking through that lens, but I get the projects that are before us.
Do you want to comment on why? Because in the time I've been on the council, it's been at the upper end of the range, but there's some footnotes here that I think you should comment on in terms of why they are at the highest levels they've been.
So there's a couple of reasons why it's been the highest level that it's been. We have received, really, during the pandemic and post-pandemic, we've received the CARES funding, we've received the ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan, and we've received Build America Bonds funding, and all of those have contributed to increase the fund balance and provide a lot of resources to do a lot of the great projects that we have done. That being said, we do strive to always come in under budget and, you know, surpass the expectations. We do budget conservatively because our goal is to have the resources available to do all of the city's services and provide those services that we need to. So we do typically tend to beat our budget estimates, but we can't always promise that it's going to happen. But what has really caused that surplus over the past year since 2020 is all of those funds that we have received through all of those different stimulus packages. And those are really, by the end of 2024, we will have spent down the Build America Bonds, the ARPA funding, and the CARES Act was spent in 2020 that was used a few years ago.
Historically, in Chair Tulludo's mind, before these, if you went further to the left on the chart, which you can't see because it's not there, but we were generally, we were proud to be at the top of that blue ribbon. We were never quite as high as this. So I agree that we got to keep an eye on it, but I'm not sure that we're, I just think that historical perspective is probably useful. Chair, Alderman Tulludo.
Thanks. And I'll just say, you know, this chart often and always, in my experience, looks like this every year. And as Director Coyle mentioned, you know, we have a, we have a great budgeting process. We have a very conservative budgeting process, and we often end up above what our estimates are. So you can look back, and I have the books if you want to come over. This chart, like you could copy this chart and paste it into like last year's budget book and the one before that, and it's going to look the same, like it's going to be dropping off, the sky is falling. We tend, because of the practices of staff and the budgeting process, we tend to come out okay, and the sky doesn't fall. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be keeping an eye on everything. And if, you know, if history is different this year in the budget for a specific reason, you know, staff should also be calling our attention to that as well, if there is a reason why that would behave differently than in the past.
And it's, it's an excellent question because I remember asking that myself several times. All right, let's move on. City Manager, are we going to begin with the Police Department?
Yes. I'm pleased to introduce Police Chief Mike McLean to overview the Police Department budget.
And so if you'll turn in your workbooks to, I like saying that makes me feel young, page 2-48.
I think it's around there.
Chief McLean.
Mayor Levin and the members of the Elmhurst City Council, I am pleased to present the proposed 2025 budget of the Elmhurst Police Department. This past September marked the second full year of our department's focus on five strategic areas that guide our Police Department's mission to ensure the highest levels of service to our community. These areas, officer wellness, recruitment and retention, crime suppression, traffic safety, and community policing, are the foundation of our department's daily efforts to provide trusted public safety in Elmhurst. It is my belief both the community and the membership of the Police Department continue to benefit from these focus areas that have produced many significant accomplishments in 2024. As of October 1st, the Police Department provided service at 32,725 incidents, which is a half a percent decrease over the prior year. Of those, approximately 46% were responses to 911 calls, and 54% were officer-initiated activities. The department filed 292 felony criminal charges, 405 misdemeanor criminal charges, and almost 300 citations for violations of local ordinance, which is a 3.5% increase over the prior year. As of October 1st, 294 FBI-defined UCR crimes have been reported versus the 340 year-to-date in 2023, which is a 13% reduction. Traffic collisions have increased slightly, 1.5% compared to 2023, but remain well below the levels that we saw pre-pandemic from 2013 to 2019, where we saw on average 400 more traffic collisions annually. The department issued 8,706 traffic violation citations, 3,405 warning citations, and 7,338 parking citations, which is a combined 13% increase over the prior year. 177 drivers were arrested for driving under the influence, which is a 21% increase from 2023. The Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists rated EPD a top 10 police department again for DUI enforcement statewide. We came in number eight in total DUI arrests out of 800 agencies surveyed. The Police Department's social worker provided services for 95 crisis cases involving juveniles, mental illness, neighborhood disputes, and family incidents. The Traffic Safety Unit responded to 53 traffic concern locations pertaining to speeding, stop sign, or other traffic violations, with details assigned for sustained enforcement at concerned locations. With our two summer traffic safety interns, 43 speed sign deployments were completed for traffic calming, and the department's two speed trailers were generally placed all year in northeast Elmhurst for truck traffic regulation. The department's prescription drug collection box and take-back events have collected over 653 pounds of prescription medication. A quick advertisement, our next drug take-back day will be this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Mary, you beat me to that announcement, but it was already in my notes, so I just went with it. The department's recruitment team assisted in hiring seven full-time police officers, three community service officers, one record supervisor, and one part-time background investigator in the last 10 months. The department had successfully completed a successful outreach year with two Citizen Police Academy classes, public safety night, summer mobile patrol, seniors and law enforcement together, and 28 neighborhood roll calls. More than 600 residents attended their neighborhood roll calls this summer. To more effectively protect the community, the department researched and implemented two remote systems to safely end vehicle pursuits that enter our city. One is a GPS-based system, and the other is a tire deflation technology. We safely ended several forcible felony pursuits, including armed robbery and burglary suspects entering our city during the last 10 months. Public safety education included coordination with the Youth Commission to hold a presentation night on digital safety, scams, and protection from child predators. In a major change to our operations, we successfully implemented the body worn camera program for all police officers in compliance with the Illinois Safety Act, eight months ahead of the mandated schedule. These cameras are complemented by new squad car dash cameras, interview room cameras, and operate off a cloud-based video evidence system. This year, we added three hybrid vehicles for our fleet, replacing aged ones, and received two electric vehicles, one administrative or investigative vehicle, and one service officer vehicle to contribute to the city's sustainability plan. The department applied for and received approximately $100,000 in Illinois State Grants for traffic enforcement and organized retail crime interdiction. The department peer support team continued to provide wellness support and training to staff members experiencing stress after traumatic duty incidents, and new this year partnered with the 100 Club of Illinois to roll out a free wellness support app to our police officers. Significant career development achievements this year included one officer promoted to the rank of sergeant, one deputy chief graduating from the FBI National Academy, and one sergeant who is attending the Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command. The Police Department's professionalism and performance was recognized this year as we continue to be rated an ILEAP Tier One agency. The Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police recognized four of our officers with state lifesaving awards, and in August, a personal finance website rated Elmhurst as one of the top safest suburbs in the country. Looking ahead to 2025, we will, in coordination with the IT Department, implement a 10-camera ALPR replacement schedule on a five-year cycle, thereby maintaining the city's wifi system of license plate readers. We'll transition our digital evidence preservation to the Axon cloud-based system from our legacy server hardware in the police station. We'll utilize the 2025 Illinois Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program grants from IDOT to enhance traffic safety through DUI, seatbelt, and distracted driving enforcement. We just received news last week that we received our award, and that grant amount is $102,000. We also utilized the 2025 Illinois Attorney General's Organized Retail Crime Grant to install public safety cameras on city-owned infrastructure near busy retail and business locations to reduce crime, assist police response outcomes, and promote public safety. We also received news from the state that our award for that grant was $60,000. We will apply for the 2025 Illinois Body Worn Camera Grant at the state level. That's a January through March- That's a January-through-March application window to apply to get funds reimbursed to the city for our body worn camera program. We'll ensure a minimum level of 40 hours of training per sworn officer, including a minimum of three in-service training sessions. We will complete school of police staff in command training courses for our recently-promoted sergeants. We'll continue to staff the two officer Strategic Mission Team to address emerging crime trends. We'll staff the two officer and two intern traffic safety unit to jointly address neighborhood traffic, traffic safety concerns, identify at high-volume traffic crash areas, and expand traffic safety public education. We'll work to establish a formal plan to meet the facility needs of the Police Department to more effectively serve the public safety of Elmhurst. We'll mentor and train the next generation of evidence technicians, field training officers, tactical patrol officers, and crisis negotiators to serve the community in specialty roles. Our Police Department has hired 21 new police officers in the last three years, and we still have a vacancy. We're focused on the career development to take them to the next level roles in our police agency. We've experienced a huge generational shift as officers hired in the 1980s and 1990s have retired, and a new generation steps onto the field. I suspect 30 years from now, some future police chief will be sitting here talking to some future, future city council and talking about their plan for recruitment of new police officers due to this cyclical event. We will expand our public safety drone program to gain capability with the searching of interiors of buildings. We had an incident at our, at our restaurant in town over the summer, and rather than endangering officers, a neighboring agency was able to utilize a drone inside a building and bring it to a safe conclusion, and we'd like to bring that same capability to Elmhurst. We're going to continue to provide proactive efforts to reduce crime and increase safety in partnership with our residents. I have a few items of note in our 2025 proposed budget that I'd just like to draw your attention to in detail. I'm going to start off under the Other Services line item, which is number 539999. $150,000 of that line item is for our body camera program, dash camera, and cloud services to support them. Our body camera system is integrated with our dash cameras, and it's all operating off a cloud-based backend that requires an annual lease fee. $110,000 of that Other Services line item goes to the DuPage ETSB for our countywide records management system. It's the system that most all agencies in DuPage County operate out of and allows us to share information. $40,000 of that line item is also funded for new license plate readers through the State Attorney General's Organized Retail Crime Grant. Under the Minor Equipment line item, which is 540010, $50,000 of that line item is to replace legacy ALPR equipment. We installed our first license plate readers in 2016, and much of the, that initial camera technology is end-of-life and needs to be replaced in order to maintain the same level of public safety. Under Forfeitures, which is line item 530545, $50,000 of that line item is to replace obsolete tasers. Tasers are less lethal technology that allows officers to resolve situations, sometimes without the use of a firearm, even though the people that they may be encountering may be highly dangerous. We applied for a state less lethal grant to get state dollars to replace our tasers. However, there was a shift during the summer session, or before the session went into the summer, and the $19 million less lethal grant was reduced down to $5 million at the state level, therefore reducing the amount of money available to agencies. Therefore, the organization overseeing the grant prioritized agencies that did not have any tasers and needed to get their initial batch. Under the DUCOM line item, which is 530500, that's our largest single line item. It's just over a million dollars. DUCOM is our consolidated countywide 911 dispatch center. We pay per full-time officer. That's how agencies throughout DuPage County are billed, depending on size, and it provides us our 911 call-taking and then our radio dispatch services to our officers. Under Social Services, which is 530525, that remains flat due to a recently negotiated agreement that we signed a year ago. Under Contract Staffing, which is line item 530105, that is for staff that provides services to the city through the Police Department. The largest portion of that contract staffing is for our crossing guard program. That is $306,000, and the remainder is for one contract records employee. The crossing guard contract was flat for the two prior school years. We did do an RFP over the summer, and after those fees were made flat for those two years, we did see an increase. They staff 20 school crossings throughout the city, two relief guards that work when the 20, when any of the 20 crossing guards have a sick call or a medical appointment and can't fulfill their duty, and then a supervisor to run the program. And then finally, in the capital, you'll see the outlay for building improvements is a $3.2 million estimate for the engineering design of either a renovated or addition building or a new police facility, as described in the five-year CEB, though the upcoming discussion and city council action is required to identify the specific path forward. As demonstrated this year, our focus in 2025 is to continue to increase Police Department effectiveness to reduce crime levels while increasing public safety in partnership with our residents. As always, I thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you, Chief. Discussion, questions? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Just a couple of questions off the bat here. I know, I don't know how many years ago now, we shifted to a 12-hour shift for our police officers, and I believe at that time, when we were having those discussions, it was talked about hopefully seeing some reduction in the overtime hours. I can't really tell in regards to these numbers, because I think it started before the 2022 cycle, but have we seen a reduction in overtime hours due to moving to the 12-hour shift?
That's been a moving target. So the first year we went to 12-hour shifts was 2020, and in 2020, we saw our staffing levels remained flat. People were not retiring, people were not leaving, people were not taking vacations. You know, it was just, just a very, very flat year. So we did actually see a significant reduction in overtime that year. But then what we saw in the year subsequent is we saw a high level of retirements. A number of officers were retiring, and that left vacancies that we had, basically a backlog to fill, and that backlog reduced, resulted in patrol officer vacancies in the department. When we have a patrol officer vacancy, we fill that vacancy so that every beat in town has a patrol officer working it, and that those beat officers have a backup officer when they get an important call. So that, that was why those, those numbers did go up. So if you look earlier into the overtime section, you'll see in 2022, it was 980,000, and in 2023, it was 968. We have seen a reduction recently now. So staffing has come, come up. We went from in 2022, having about 10 vacancies in our agency, to as I sit right now, I've got one. So we still have a number of officers in the police academy in training, but as far as a spot that doesn't have anybody hired, that's just one right now. So as I spoke about earlier, we filled a lot of positions that were vacant in the prior years. That's reduced the overtime that we're seeing. It's my hope that the three officers we have in the police academy right now, when they graduate in January and complete the field training program in the spring, they will fill the remaining vacancies, and we'll see that number drop even more.
Thank you. And you answered in that answer one of my other questions in regards to staffing, where we are from budget in regards to actuals. So thank you for that. The only other question I have at this time is, and I should do our old practice of page 248, I believe. I need my readers nowadays.
It's our current practice.
In regards to line item 530105, I know you spoke to it in regards to the crossing guards being a big part of that budget line item. Have we started, or maybe we need a referral to start conversation, but have we had any conversations in regards to seeing if the school district would pay for part of this, all of this, or where are we at with those type of discussions, if any? And if not, I'd like to make it a circle back.
At the, at the Police Department level, I have not.
Alderman Brennan?
Yeah, so there, there's a referral that, that is going to do exactly that. The contract's three years. We can cancel at any point, but we do want to have dialogue with District 205. So that referral's in, and we'll start to get worked.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
All right. I do want to point out before we, you know, you got your budget books delivered on Thursday, and I think so there's a lot to read, but I just want to, particularly for the new Alderman, like starting on page 1-59 is a complete review, as there is for every other department, of a lot of the background statistics and information of the accomplishments of 2024, the goals and objectives of the department, and what they look forward to 2025. So if you didn't have time to read it, and you want to refresh to go back, that's where you'll find it. I think it's helpful to put it together, the text of what's going on with the numbers that kind of ties it in. Alderman Tullio?
Yes, thank you. And my question is related to the 2024 accomplishment bullets, specifically related to the 21% increase in the driving under the influence citations. Does the Police Department track data of whether that is alcohol or cannabis or some other influence substance? And if so, what is, you know, the relationship between those in terms of the increase? And if not, do you have any anecdotal evidence about one or the other driving that increase, or is it consistent among all substances? Thank you.
So I don't have the exact data in front of me. We do charge them differently, so we are able to tell the difference between a DUI charge for an alcohol or a DUI for a drug like cannabis or some other controlled substance. Anecdotally, I will just say the vast majority of our DUI arrests are still alcohol-related. We did see an increase in drugged driving beginning about a decade ago that began to become a higher proportion of our DUI arrests. But anecdotally, I would still say about 90% of our DUIs are still alcohol-related.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. So if I may be so bald, I mean bold, and ask about question, a question about item number, let's see what it is here, 570100 on 249, which relates to CEB 25, the police station. I see the funds in there that I imagine are for initial engineering for that project. And I'm not sure if it's an appropriate question to bring up now, or I know that when we have things on the CEB, you know, it's sort of a circular reasoning that we have it on the CEB, and therefore we approve it, the budget, and it comes back on the CEB, depending on how we move forward on that. So I guess my question is maybe, where are we right now with discussions about financing the police station?
Alderman Tullio, if you would like to comment.
Oh, you want me to take that? The topic is still at the Finance Committee. I think we will be discussing it again at the next committee meeting. You know, as a committee, we are still evaluating different revenue options, and the plan would be to, as a committee, put together a recommendation of if the police station were to be built, as proposed by the, your committee, how would it get paid for with a possible alternate option to consider as well for the city council. So more to come, still in front of the committee.
Mayor, can I add to what Chair Tullio said?
Certainly.
Thank you. In the meantime, staff has been putting together a series of videos showing all the deficiencies that we've talked about at the police station. It'd be very difficult to kind of open up the police station to tourists, to the entire public. There might be an opportunity for that in the future, but in the meantime, we are putting together a series of videos starring the police chief, and we're finalizing those, and those should be out shortly as we continue that discussion at the Finance Committee.
So I guess I'm still a little confused about this, though. I mean, now that we still have this, and I, I do believe we do need a new police station. I'm not sure how we're going to afford it or when that's going to happen, but is this common? I mean, it seems like in years past, it's common that we've had something projected and put on the CEB that we'd like to do, but sometimes, again, I feel like putting on the CEB sort of keeps a placeholder that we are going to do this project. So is this something that should be on the CEB and include in the budget before the discussion is finalized?
The CEB or the operating budget?
Just so you understand the relationship, it goes into the CEB for the projection, and the part that, of whatever the capital is that is going to be in the current budget, that part winds up in the budget. So it already, it has been in the CEB, and this, this is only the portion that would be for expenditure in fiscal year 2025, calendar year 2025 now. Okay, thank you. City Treasurer?
J form. With respect to this line item, should that exist? I mean, we know what's, we know what it is, but if I'm, if I'm taking off my elected official hat and I'm just a citizen, it would be nice to quickly turn to the next page and say that's just something to consider to put this building improvement as a, as a J form item.
I'm sorry, are you saying that it should be specifically listed on the?
It would be helpful, wouldn't it? I mean, we can all reference, but we know it's on the CEB, but if I'm like a citizen, I'm probably not sure how this all weaves in.
I don't want to be condescending, but it took me about five years to figure out this budget. So I think it's probably even more difficult for the public, but I think part of the reason we talk about it in these meetings, and it is building improvement, I suppose we can add it in, but we will be talking about under the, when we talk about the CEB, we've talked about it. But if anyone has any questions about why it's there, it's there for the engineering, for the study to design the Police Department. That study is important to find out if it actually costs what we think it'll cost, and so that I think the case for the police station is strong. It's not really easily understood by the public now, but I believe it will be when they see the videos, and we better make the case of why, in my opinion, it's almost essential. But the engineering, if for some reason it doesn't move forward in '26 or '27, at least the engineering is there so that we know what it's going to take. I don't see that it's going to be a new fashion, like the McMansion becomes something else and it's not stylish anymore. The police station will still be the police station. And I, and I will, not that it's directly relevant, but there, there are a couple of videos of what I would consider to be, not what I consider, which are newer police stations built in Du, DuPage. One is Wooddale. That video I've.
Wood Ridge.
Wood Ridge, sorry, thank you. I toured the Downers Grove Police Station, which opened a few months ago. I think Glendale Heights has a new one. And when the public and the council sees the contrast between the sorry state of the interior of our police station and what modern police stations look like and the capabilities they have, but I'm not going to make the entire case now. Please come to my State of the City address for more. All right. Other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I was just wondering about crime trends. I know we've, we hear a lot in the news about how crime's on all-time highs and things like that. I'm going back and looking at the, you know, FBI-defined uniform crime report summary that we have in our annual report from last year, and it shows that, you know, 2021 was lower than any other year since before we have on this chart, which is 2013's earliest data we have. Last year was slightly higher than that. 22 was, you know, a little higher than both. This year, we're on track for. This year, we're on track for substantially less than 2023 even, where, you know, it's over 20% less than 22, 10% less than last year. But even on average over the last four years, it's been much lower than it was in the prior decade. Is that just an Elmhurst thing? Is that, I know there's some national trends in the last year or two that have, crime's been reduced, but it seems like we're somehow, I don't know, I feel like crime in Elmhurst is, as, to your point, where we were rated one of the safest suburbs, is substantially lower than what people feel it might be. Is there something in the data that I'm not seeing here, or is that inaccurate assessment?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make just some big picture comments. Crime is a wide range. So the, the biggest driver of crime in Elmhurst is property crime. So theft is the largest category, and that's generally going to be thefts from our retail establishments. It's going to be thefts of people's property, things like burglaries to businesses, burglaries to people's homes. Those are where, I would say, the big numbers that drive the overall UCR crime of Elmhurst are. We're fortunate that violent crime, crimes against people, is, is a much smaller number. But a one in, in one category is far different than a one on the other. You know, a sexual assault is, is far more serious of a crime than a theft from a store. But when you, you know, aggregate those numbers and put your, your total number towards the FBI, you're, you know, you're going to have somewhere in the range of three, four, five, 600 crimes in a suburb. So really, you got to drill down into what the specific crimes are. I can say we've been doing, I think, a really good job over the last few years in driving down property crime. One of the things that I think really have helped us in the last few years has been our license plate reader network. And one of the things we did just a few years ago was, instead of it becoming a reactive system where we just looked and tried to investigate and solve crimes after the fact, we gained the ability to actually be alerted when stolen cars or vehicles used in felony crimes enter town. And that has allowed our officers to be proactive. So when a vehicle that, it's very common for criminals to steal a car, because they don't want to drive their own car, to commit a crime, and when they enter Elmhurst in a stolen car, if that car's been reported, our officers are getting an alert. So it's very common for us to hear a stolen car alert come Westbonne North Avenue, entering town from the 290. Our officers respond, check the area, look for the car. In some cases, the car continues all the way through and, and we never see it. In other cases, our officers are finding the car, stopping it, and arresting the person, or at the very least, they're trying to stop the car, interdicting it, and it's leaving town. You know, we don't engage in dangerous vehicle pursuits if, unless we have a forcible felony that occurs. So for a simple property crime, we're not going to endanger the public in a vehicle pursuit. So sometimes, especially in the overnight hours when that's happening, you know, we're chasing these criminals out of town and preventing them from committing a crime. I think that's the biggest driver of, of, of lower property crime in our town. Unfortunately, this year, we did see an increase in armed robberies versus last year. We had a very low armed robbery year in 2023, you know, and we're running about double that this year, but it's still a small number. It's seven, as I sit here right now. I'm happy to say that, that the majority of those armed robberies have been solved with arrests, but that's a crime of violence, that's a crime that affects the community much more.
Great, thank you. One other comment, you mentioned license plate readers and technology like that. You know, those are a force multiplier, it helps you guys out a lot, and obviously, we as a council are supportive of that, so any other technological things you see on the horizon that might be useful, you know, please let, obviously, us know, committee know.
Do you want to talk about our newest technology you're looking at for fleeing vehicles that we can't do a high-speed chase on?
So in my remarks, I did make some, some general comments. We've recently adopted two vehicle pursuit termination technologies, and they both operate on different principles. The, the first is a GPS-based system where if a vehicle is fleeing from a police officer, we're able to basically launch a GPS tag that has a sticky front on the tag at the bumper of the car. It adheres to the back bumper, and our officers can then back off, stop pursuing, and then just use an app on a cell phone to see where this car is going. We recently had success, you know, ju- just about a week and a half ago, with two vehicles that were burglarizing a business on North Avenue in town at about 4:30 in the morning. One of our alert patrol officers just happened to be at the right place at the right time, drive down North Avenue and see that that looked wrong, pulled in the lot. They'd just broken out the window to the store and were taking property in the cash register on the inside. When they saw the police car pulling in, they hopped in the cars, both cars were stolen, and then Fleddy spun on North Avenue. Another backup officer tried to get in front of one of the cars to prevent it from fleeing, and these criminals were pretty brazen. They rammed the back of the Elmhurst police car to get them out of the way to continue to get to 290, because ultimately, they want to escape town. We did engage in a pursuit after that crash into the police car occurred, and a neighboring agency had the same technology that we do for the GPS tag. They were able to get behind it and tag one of the cars. We were able to back off the pursuit. Once we backed off the pursuit, we were able to track that car to ultimately a place in Cook County where they stopped, and then both men bailed. And we were on the radio providing that updated location to the town where these two suspects had bailed, and they were able to get them into custody within just minutes. So I think it's, that technology was really helpful in, in that particular incident, instance. It's safer for the other, the motoring public when we're not engaging in a high-speed vehicle pursuit, even though, you know, it's my belief it's the criminals that, that make that choice and make that happen, it's not the police officers. And the other technology that we've recently adopted is a remote tire deflation device. We bought several of these units, and they're similar to stop sticks, but it's kind of like the next generation. Stop sticks are somewhat dangerous in that officers have to stand on the side of the road next to a vehicle that's going very fast, endanger themselves, and throw this stick in front of, in front of the moving car. We learned of a technology that actually, it comes from the Netherlands in Europe. They've had success with it there. We bought several of the units, and basically, it's a box, and you put it on the curb, and the officer can stand 100 feet away with a remote control, and as the car approaches, he can extend the spikes into the roadway, and then by hitting the second button, he can retract them back after the vehicle's been spiked. That particular system, we've had success with several times. We did catch several men that were committing an armed robbery, basically near, near St. Charles and Villa of, of a gas station there, and then they fled through town on St. Charles Road. We got a great spike on those tires, and we were able to get those men into custody. And then just recently, we, we had a burglary where similar, similar occurrence occurred. So we're very sensitive to the danger that vehicle pursuits can, can affect our community, but also if we don't do anything to interdict these criminals, they're going to keep coming back. And they're, they're realistically going to drive that way, especially if they're fleeing a crime scene, whether a police car is behind them or not. So we want to be able to stop these cars before they get to town, if we can get ahead of it, if it's something that occurs in another town and is coming our way. One of the great things about Elmhurst is, is its location for residents, you know, easy to get to the expressways, easy to get to Chicago. The criminals think the same way. So if they're committing a crime in a suburb west of us, they're coming our way to get to the expressway to get back to where, you know, the bigger cities are. So we have to be prepared for that, and, and I believe with this technology, it's helping us be prepared for it.
Apple's new Find My Criminal technology. All right.
One last follow-up.
Sure. Alderman Jensen?
On the, the GPS trackers, are all of our patrol vehicles equipped with that?
So, no, we actually, so they have two kinds. One is vehicle-mounted, and the other one is handheld. It's basically, it's basically kind of a GPS bazooka, I would call it. And basically, it shoots the tag out and it's handheld. So we have one of those for our detectives, and one of those for our Strategic Commission team officers. What we've actually learned is it, it's actually easier to aim with the handheld one than it is to do the bumper-launched one at, at another vehicle. You know, it, there's more, a higher success rate with the handheld one, so that's why we've gone with that technology.
Okay, are we playing, getting more of those, or?
Right now, I, I have not budgeted for it yet. I'm waiting to see if we get some more success with it.
All right, great, thank you.
All right. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you. Alderman Jensen, you know, took all my questions except for one. So, you know, first off, Elmhurst Police are amazing. It's always great to see there in the paper or through some sort of communication. We've got the bad guy through various ways, right? Whether it's good old-fashioned detective work or, or technology, you know, driven. My, my question, in addition to what you mentioned, and I don't want you to give away trade secrets here, but is there something that we aren't doing? You know, that you aren't doing that, that would really, you know, raise the, the level of, of service that you could provide to the community, because it's not in the budget?
So I will say from a, from, we are an extremely service-oriented police department. Whether you're looking at what we use to catch criminals, what we use to provide traffic safety, what we do for community outreach, I think we're doing a lot when it comes to service provision for the community. One of the things that I, as I look at the organization, that I think we really need to focus on, you know, I had a big block on, on my little speech highlighted, we've hired 21 police officers in the last three years. That is the biggest hiring swing in decades. I cannot underestimate how important it is to train and develop all of these officers that we have hired to take on the roles that this community relies on. You know, we need to replace evidence technicians, field training officers, detectives, all the things that Elmhurst has a high reputation for. We need new officers, the next generation, to step into that role. So as, as I look at what our challenge had been, it had been recruitment and hiring these people, now that I'm looking to 2025 and the years beyond, it's really taking these officers and taking them up the career ladder to develop them, to take all of these specialty roles over. Because they're the next generation, and they're, they're at the beginning of their careers. You know, some of them have just been with us for a year, some of them have been with us for three, and they're really looking to take that first big step into something beyond just patrol duty. And we need to invest in training, we need to invest in some type of scenario-based training that allows them to perform when it really matters. It is those things that I think is, is going to be our next big step.
Makes a lot of sense. So in, in the budget, is, is there ample budget to, to successfully execute against that?
Yes, so we're seeing a, so we're seeing, so the, the training budget is going up a little bit, but what we're going to see is, we're going to see kind of a big net shift on the inside of that. So for every police officer that attends the academy, it's about $5,500 tuition to send them to a police academy. And, you know, for all of the officers that we've hired, you know, we hired seven this year, you know, we spent, you know, $40,000 to $50,000 just on their academy training. What we're going to be doing now is taking that training budget, we're not going to be sending so many people to police academy next year, it's going to go down because, we're not going, we're not going on wood. But we're going to still be using those dollars that are in our budget to send them to some more advanced training.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And for, by way of reference, we have 68 sworn?
Yes.
So it's almost a third of the department is brand spanking new?
Correct, yes.
Alderman Nudera?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just want to ask a quick question when, in regard to resource officers for our schools and training, how are we doing there?
So we have two school resource officers, they're both based out of York High School. One is dedicated pretty much to serving the high school, the other has an office at the high school, but spends most of her time going out to the individual schools in town. Most of the, most of that service is being provided at the middle schools as needed, and then occasionally, an elementary school will, will need service. Every school gets basic services as far as addressing any security concerns, dealing with any threats or issues that pop up that the school administration requires assistance for. We have a very, very strong relationship with our schools, and I got to say, it's really just gotten stronger even, even over the last couple of months. All of us saw on the news, September was a year that unfortunately had, you know, deadly school shootings in our nation, and immediately following those school shootings, we did see an increase in threats nationwide to schools. Elmhurst was not immune, a lot of it was social media-based, people kind of throwing vague things out on social media, and, you know, basically concerning the school community, and every single threat had to get investigated, and it does. So we work with our private parochial and public schools when they receive a threat through either a first-person report, or if, so many of them have anonymous online reporting systems where other students can report things that they want, that they're concerned about. That threat gets somebody woken up in the middle of the night, if it's in the middle of the night, and, and we work to investigate it and address whether it's a credible threat before the next day school begins. So that is how our SROs are, are, are doing the job, and they're doing an admirable job. We see, we receive a lot of great feedback in how both of them are performing, especially from school district 205 administrators. As far as their training goes, school resource officers are required in Illinois to attend basically an SRO academy. So all, both of them are certified SROs, and they're also required to have ongoing annual SRO and juvenile officer training hours, which they complete. Generally, the way it's done is to not take them away from the school, most of their training occurs in the summer, when the kids are off, so that schools are not impacted.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Hill, then Alderman Nardini?
Thank you, Mayor. Not to come over this issue, issue again, but I'm not sure how to handle it where we would like to do this, because we have these two discussions on the police station happening at the budget and also at finance, but maybe one way you could handle it, since I'm a little confused about which way should take precedent, is to make it a circle back item, to come back and discuss that. Because I know we're supposed to discuss this now when it's, we're doing a report on this area, but I feel like it would be helpful to come back to it. Plus, I also wanted to do the first circle back, but that's not the reason I'm doing it. I think it would be helpful to come back to this and get an update then, and see where we are, considering the timelines are matching up so closely.
All right, Alderman Nardini?
Sergeant Bracca is our first female sergeant, correct?
Yes, yes, Alderman.
Do we have adequate locker and shower facilities for our female sworn officers?
As of this moment, yes. We, we have a locker for every female officer, however, right now, I think my vacancies is two. So if I hire any more than two female personnel, which includes the police officers and the uniformed community service officers that you, you probably see working as well, I'm going to run into a problem.
Do we have any situational fire range training in-house right now?
So we have a pistol and shotgun range in our, in our basement. It was part of the original construction of the building. All of the equipment is 35 years old. It has holes in the back of it, the steel has been shot through in some portions, and the mechanical equipment is non-functional. So depending on, you know, what the decision is with the police facility, whatever direction the city council chooses to go, I think it's clear even just from a mechanical maintenance standpoint, you know, that range need, needs a full renovation.
You said that.
One of the things we cannot do is, is shoot our patrol rifles in our range. So the range was never designed to handle that type of equipment. However, many years ago, with the increase in, in active shootings throughout the country, police departments transitioned from the old shotgun in the police car to, police officers now have rifles in the car to be able to address the threats that are common now in our nation. And our range can't handle that, that fire. Those, the range is not designed to handle it. So unfortunately, we can't train them every month like we do with our pistols. We have to send those officers twice a year out to an outdoor range about 30 miles west of here to get some training. As I mentioned, one of the things that I think we really need to work on in the future is our training. I would like our officers, especially for something that is as high liability and high risk as firearms use, I would like for them to be able to train more than twice a year on it.
All right, other questions? Alderman Erby?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to the Chiefs, Chief of Police McLean, that, that list that we had of 300 and whatever, we were number eight on, once you peel off traffic deaths and traffic accidents, I believe we were number one in public safety. So I think we have one of the finest chiefs in the nation sitting here with us tonight with respect to that, result of that report.
That makes me feel uncomfortable. I think the credit really needs to go to the officers, the Elmhurst Police Department, and the community. You know, we don't, we don't get anywhere without, you know, the community members being our eyes and ears. We've invested for years in crime prevention education, working together. A police officer coming across a burglary in progress, like happened a couple weeks ago, is kind of a rare thing. It's actually much more common that a resident or a passerby is going to see something unusual and call us, which is normally what happens, and I think it's that partnership And I think it's that partnership that also leads to the strong public safety we have in town.
Right, and thank you for that. The, when I, the key word there is, I said, we peel off the traffic accidents and the traffic deaths. You have 953, not you, but us as a town, we have 953 traffic accidents for calendar 2024 through October 1. If you take that number divided by 40 weeks, that comes out to 23.8 traffic accidents average per week. Last week's Friday, or the most recent Friday report came out, we had 44 traffic accidents last week in the Friday report. And then I noticed back, how does this apply to the budget? Why are you talking about this, Alderman Erby? You've got staffing two officers and two interns, safety unit is one of your bullet points on 2025. How do you see us being able to reduce, I mean, our, our public safety is incredible, but we can't control totally how many traffic accidents we have. So what can we do as a town to diminish our police budget with respect to traffic accidents? Because I know you have an FTE that does pure traffic reports, that's all they do. If the traffic reports get more burdensome, you may have to hire another partial FTE to handle traffic reports. So how do you see the trends going? What can we do to stop that budget bleed and get our guys and women back doing the street enforcement and not handling traffic accidents all day long?
Yeah, so I guess, kind of like when I was talking earlier about how crime is, it can be different depending on which crime you're looking at, and some crimes are mercurious than others, depending if there's a victim or a piece of property. I think traffic crashes can be looked at in a similar manner. Elmhurst has quiet residential streets that people live on and are very sensitive to any traffic collision that occurs in their neighborhood. And then Elmhurst has major highways. Elmhurst, for our size, has a lot of major highways, and you're thinking of every single major road from Grand Avenue to the north, Roosevelt to the south, and probably one of the biggest that goes north-south is 83. So the vast, the biggest driver of traffic crashes in Elmhurst is our major roads, it's not our residential streets. One of the projects I gave our summer traffic safety interns was to look at all of our 2023 data and tell me how many crashes are occurring on major roads and how many crashes occurred on your typical residential street, you know, that's, you know, that that people live on. And it was 94% of crashes are on major roads. So your North Avenues, your St. Charles Roads, your Grand Avenues, your Lake Streets, and only 6% occur on neighborhood residential streets. So we put a, we put a lot of focus on neighborhood residential streets because that's where children play and that's where, that's where kids walk to and from school. But when we're talking about the big traffic crash numbers, those numbers are coming on the major roads, those are people that are commuting through Elmhurst to get to and from work or to some other, some other location. The massive traffic volumes that go on those major roads are what drive those traffic crash numbers, you know, the traffic volumes on our small residential streets are not anywhere close to what the traffic volumes on those major residential roads are. The other thing I would say is I've worked here in Elmhurst for 25 years, and we actually used to handle a lot more traffic crashes. We've seen a big shift after COVID, after 2020. If you look at our most recent annual report on page 32, there's the traffic collision total totals that goes all the way back from 2013 through 2023. And when you look at 2013 all the way to 2019, we, every single year, like clockwork, were 1,700 to 1,800 crashes per year, every single year. We saw a huge drop in 2020 due to COVID that was totally expected, people were not going to work. But what we've seen since is that we didn't return back to that 1,700 and 1,800 level crash per year level that we were like clockwork seeing. We've stayed at this 1,200 and 1,300 level over the last three years. So we've seen a steady reduction of 400 crashes per year in comparison to where we were pre-2020.
Do you have a rough idea of how much your total sworn officer budget goes to traffic accident reporting and including your one FTE report?
I know, I know we're, I know we're sensitive to that, we do, we do certain things from a response standpoint that save our officers some time. So if we have a minor traffic collision, both vehicles are drivable, everybody's got driver's licenses and insurance, we actually send those drivers into the front desk of the police station, and our front desk service officer completes the traffic crash report, and that frees up the patrol officer to go back to their patrol duties. So we try to be efficient from that standpoint so that we're not otherwise burdening the patrol officer and keeping them from more priority calls. Not every town does that, that's something that we've had in place for decades and how we do things here in Elmhurst, and I think it's been effective. I think, you know, when you're looking at the numbers we have here, you can have a very simple traffic crash, if everybody's got insurance, everybody's got a driver's license, both vehicles are drivable, nobody needs a tow truck, an officer can, you know, finish that report in 20 minutes, give them their copies, and everybody's on their way. You can have a very complicated traffic crash with injuries, and you're visiting people in the hospital, and you're, you know, you're towing cars, where you may spend hours on that. So crashes can be vastly different depending on what type of roadway it occurred on, how many vehicles were involved. It would be really hard for me to make like an apples to apples comparison on.
Do you have some budget expectation from that bullet item with your two new, that strategy you're going to approach for traffic?
So I think we've.
You think that has an impact of X amount you're expecting, or to be determined?
To be determined, it's, it's a, it's a prevention program. So, you know, one of the things I think we've done well the last two years is we've increased traffic enforcement over the last two years. So we've, we've seen increases, there's, we've gotten bigger grant dollars from the state for our STEP grant, so, you know, our officers have been making more DUI arrests, they've been issuing more, more tickets for violations that cause crashes like speeding. So I, so I think on the enforcement side, we've seen significant progress. One of the things that I think we would be a great partnership, kind of similar to what we've done on the crime side, is to enlist more help from the community in traffic safety. You know, so we were working on a program to basically have neighborhoods, you know, be advocates for, you know, driving the speed limit in neighborhoods, stopping at stop signs in neighborhoods, you know, kind of making the neighborhoods, you know, safe as they can be, because the vast majority of people that drive on neighborhood streets are Elmhurst residents. They're not, you know, they're not people that are driving, you know, to Chicago or back from Chicago. If somebody's on a neighborhood street, it's very likely they're an Elmhurst resident. So if we can, if we can get their buy-in and their partnership for the neighborhood streets, I think the residents are going to be a lot happier about the traffic they see in their neighborhoods.
One final wrap-up. The 86 count we have, 18 non-sworn, 68 sworn, does that include the second parking enforcement officer or personnel?
Don't believe it does.
Does not? Thank you.
All right, other, Alderman Bram? Just quickly on the topic of traffic enforcement and speeding in local neighborhoods and subdivisions, are there any tools? I mean, I know that the trailer, radar trailer is successful to some degree, the pole mounted radar signs is successful to some degree. Is there anything that we could do, we can purchase or to assist with preventing? And I like and understand the program that you're mentioning, but from a technology perspective, to prevent or mitigate to the best of our ability people traveling through these subdivisions? I know, as, as well as you do, you know, just even today, we've had, and this is a little bit off topic, but three semi tractor trailers cutting through our neighborhood. I don't know if there's any mechanism to, I don't want to say shut down the subdivision, but do something to prevent, you know, non-residential commuters cutting through traffic, you know, speeding wise. I'm a big fan of the pole mounted radar signs, should we be purchasing more of those? What's your thoughts on that?
So I think what's been very helpful for us has been the neighborhood traffic studies in that we're, we have a, an actual traffic engineer studying our streets, looking at the volume numbers, looking at the speeds, a traffic engineer that looks at neighborhoods and a ton of communities, not just, you know, not just looking at experience just from one community, and, you know, advising us on what looks, what looks unusual from a traffic flow standpoint, whether it's volumes or whether it's speeds, and then providing us, you know, the expert guidance on what can be done to mitigate it. I think, you know, the, the things that would probably be helpful for the issues that you're identifying, Alderman, would probably be more in the engineering category than, than the enforcement category. There are technologies like speed cameras, but the current state law, state law only allows one jurisdiction to use those, and that's the city of Chicago. You know, so technology related to a camera issuing speeding tickets is not a possibility in a town like Elmhurst. What we do with the technology that we have implemented in our traffic safety unit is we're trying to identify when these problems are occurring, or if these problems are actually, you know, even facts. Sometimes people can think cars are going faster than they actually are, so we want to verify with data, you know, is, is there actually a speeding problem here? Or in some cases, what we find is, you know, if, if there's just one car at a certain time that is always going fast, we got to address that one problem violator, or that, that handful of problem violators, you know, with enforcement. So by targeting our enforcement with what the, the data recorders are telling us when the problem is, what day of the week and what time, you know, that makes our officers more effective from, from the enforcement standpoint. As far as, you know, blanket things like preventing truck traffic from going into neighborhoods, I think that that really probably falls more into the engineering side, you know, what sort of signs are controlling the roadways, how are the roads designed, you know, what are the adjacencies to where trucks are going, are we making it easy for them to pull in there, are we not? So, so I think we'd have to work as a team with the engineering side to, to make that more a reality.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Alderman Tullu.
Alderman Jensen said he used up too much of his time, so I have to ask this question, but it's a good question. This is regarding the parking enforcement office, officers or civilian personnel. I think we spoke about this last year during budget and possibly during kind of some of our parking fee discussions as far as revenues. Last year, we did not, we chose not to hire as a council the second parking enforcement employee, but they are, we are budgeted for two in 2025. Can we speak about that?
I can. So the second parking enforcement officer was always in the parking fund, it was never in this budget that we're, we're talking about tonight, but the parking fund does not include that second enforcement officer. Actually, both parking enforcement officers are in the parking fund, so neither enforcement officer is in this specific general fund budget, they are both in the parking fund. But this year, 2025, we only do have one because that was aligned with the, the financial review we did of the parking fund.
Just a follow-up, thank you for that. It is just listed on 1-42 as a police personnel member, so it may be confusing to people like us, that it's not in the police budget, but it's funded by the parking system. But maybe there's just nowhere else to put it, so, but okay, thank you for that clarification.
All right. All right. I think we have covered everything, Chief. I want to thank you for your time and your presentation. Obviously, a police department of which our entire council is proud doesn't just happen overnight, and I, I think, as you say, we have some excellent command staff, excellent leadership. I think if you ask most, Alderman, we'll say public safety is our number one priority, and for the public, we intend to keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City manager, we're going to move on to fire?
Yes, everybody's up for that. As we're transitioning, it was very interesting to hear the discussion and the questions that everybody was asking, different facets of what makes the Elmhurst Police Department what it is. And Mayor, you touched on it at the end, but one thing that Chief didn't talk about is the communication that's out there and the representation that he and the command staff have in surrounding communities in DuPage County, and of course, the respect and the, the partnerships that they gain through all of that. But the communication, to me, is one of the most amazing parts. You can talk about the technology and the training, but when, when the chief calls me and tells me about one of the, the chases we had or something like that, all of our communities surrounding us are working together. And as, as Chief said, we had another department that deployed that DART, but it was our call, but they are more than happy to help us because we're all of the same mindset in keeping that crime out of DuPage County and all of our communities, so I appreciate that, too. Thanks, Chief. So next, if we turn to page 2-41, that's the beginning of fire protection, and then we have three items for that, we have fire protection, and then wireless radio program, and finally, our ESDA program, and that should, hopefully, we can get through that and wrap this up tonight.
You know our 10 o'clock rule, see, if it's 10:04, it might work, but we'll see. All right.
And I'll introduce Chief Dufort.
Thank you, manager. Good evening, Mayor Levin and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2025 Fire Department Budget. 2024 has been a very busy year. Before we get into the budget for next year, I'd like to share some of the significant accomplishments over the last year and some goals for 2025. To provide serious level of service and to protect life and property takes a large commitment. The support you have given to the department allows us to provide that service. As of today, the department has responded to 500 or 5,496 calls to service. This number is a small tick down from last year, but for good reason. Our Fire Prevention Bureau worked last year very hard with one of our larger apartment complexes to convert a smoke detector to a rate of rise detector. And basically, what that does is it eliminates a lot of false activations where it doesn't, it, it measures the rate of the heat in the room as opposed to smoke, and basically, it eliminated about 100 unintentional or false activations. So those are things that we look at all the time to try to reduce some of the calls that we go on for those reasons. We continue to look for these types of calls. As a whole, 66% of our calls were EMS-based and 34% were fire-based incidents. This comes to an average of about 580 calls per month, or about 19 calls per day. The department logged more than 12,000 hours of training, that comes to about an average of 360 hours per person so far this year, will probably close to 15,000 hours of training for the year. This number is due again to the number of employees we have hired and promoted the last couple of years. The fire department is once again, we're very proud of, being awarded a Class 1 rating from the Insurance Services Office, which is called ISO. ISO rates fire departments in a scale of 1 to 10, with Class 1 being the highest rating. The department received that originally in 2018 and is honored to receive that rating for a second time. ISO evaluates more than 46,000 fire departments in the United States. Of those, in 2023, just 400 departments in the country have an ISO 1 rating. In the state of Illinois, we are one of only 29 departments that hold that designation. They say getting an ISO 1 designation is hard to get, it's even harder to keep. One of those things that we just got some information on today, one of the things that ISO looks at is our response rate, and the industry standard is to be below five minutes. Ours today, as of today, the last 30 days was four minutes and five seconds. We're very proud of that. ISO is a standardized national rating system that evaluates and assigns a number on a scale regarding the condition of a community's fire protection system. This certification is based on several factors, they include dispatch capabilities, fire suppression, training, public education, fire prevention, water distribution, and finally, community outreach. Something else we're very proud of is winning the 2024 Joseph Hartman Award. This is an award that is for medical excellence, excellence in pre-hospital care. Our firefighters respond with our medics on all EMS calls. On this day, crews were called for a full arrest with special circumstances. Just to point out that this call was not submitted as they normally are. This was picked out as a special call that the EMS coordinator at Good Samaritan saw for its uniqueness and outcome. This is just another example of how our firefighters and medics. This is just another example of how our firefighters and medics working together to provide excellent service for the community. The city was awarded a grant from the state of Illinois, an Illinois Senator, Susie Glouek Hilton, for $850,000 to purchase a new Pierce Fire Engine. The final build drawings were completed this month. Construction will begin in December, and a delivery will be targeted for the first quarter of 2025. In 2023, we began a fundraising campaign to raise money for the construction of a first responders memorial of Fire Station Number Two, and as many of you were there, it was completed by targeted date of 9/11, and happy to say, under budget. A special thank you to Ken Bartels and my Deputy Chief, Steve Reynolds, as they led the fundraising efforts. So for this year, we've completed over 2,000 Fire Prevention Bureau and Fire Company inspections. Now, we actually have four part-time personnel conducting business occupancy inspections, school fire drills, annual school inspections, along with review of plans that come in through the building department. Our Public Education Division continues our partnership with Communications Department to maximize our community outreach. This has become integral in our, keeping our ISO 1 designation. Some of these things that we do include Fire Department Annual Report, Public Safety Night with the Police Department, our open house, which is just this month, block parties, and our very popular New Year's Eve bash at Station Two. Some of our goals for 2025, the mission and values of our department have not changed. We strive to provide the highest-quality services that those who live, work, and visit our community, while remembering that we're strongest when we work together. We want to keep reimagining the Fire Department in ways to be cost-effective and maintain our service levels at the highest point that they can be. This will be done with changes in our running orders and our apparatus responses, and is one of the things I could talk about earlier, looking for other things to cut down on the amount of calls that we respond to with the smoke detectors earlier. Throughout, or though it's been delayed a year, we were supposed to have our radios through the ETSB, which is Emergency Telephone System Board, and DUCOM. Unfortunately, through issues that they had with technology, hopefully, we'll be getting those by the end of the year, and that will greatly enhance the local radio traffic and all of our overall communications between fire companies. We continue to target hazard assessment for the city and update resources as they, as needed to ensure that the Fire Department expands its capabilities as the city continues to grow. We want to begin the process through committee to repair our existing training tower with a more state-of-the-art facility that poses significant health risks to our firefighters and reduce maintenance costs. We want to continue to grow our junior firefighter program, which gives our younger residents interested in entering the fire service, the basics of what it's like to be a firefighter. One of the other things that we're doing now is, last weekend, we just had a, one of our newest things is teaching CPR classes. We taught about, I think it was 17 middle school and 17 high school students CPR. This kind of originated from a call that we had, or we did not have, it happened in another town where a coach, which we did train in CPR, helped save the life of an Elmhurst resident, York student. So we want to keep that up and keep training our younger members. We also, like I talked about earlier, we want to put our new fire engine into service that'll be here next year. We are in the planning stages of a drone program. We're kind of following in suit with the Police Department. They're kind of the, they were the ones who kind of started the whole thing, but this allow us to effectively and efficiently, when responding to emergency calls for service like water incidents or search and rescue, where we need to cover a large space in a short amount of time. It could also be used in a stagnant set of eyes for a command vehicle at a fire or a large-scale incident. We'll continue to work with our MABUS, which is Mutual Eight Box Alarm System Partners, to keep assets up to date and deployable anywhere in the county as needed, which we found out to be nationally, we had a potential last week, or the week before, to go to Florida, deployable to help out with the hurricane down there. They had a call up, they, we put together groups to go down there, but they ended up not calling us. This is crucial as it disperses essential equipment throughout the county, the state, and the country that's shared when incidents occur. This has specialty equipment that deals with hazardous materials, technical rescue, rope-confined space, trench, structural collapse, dive, and swift water. Homeland Security and Task Force calls out, callouts are for major incidents. A couple of years ago, there was a major incident north and west of here. It was a battery storage facility. We almost got called out for that also. I'd like to call out a couple of items for this year's budget. On page 2-42, you will see, in our employee training, it would be number 530120. You'll see an increase in the budget that reflects our desire to send our newer members to a fire academy. In the past, we've tried, well, we have trained our new firefighters in-house. The unfortunate part right now is we do not have a facility that we can start fires and have fire training in with our training tower, which is one of the reasons why we're trying to get that upgraded. This is a nine-week program of intensive, intensive program, which teaches basic operations as a firefighter, but it also certifies them in seven additional disciplines of classes that they have to take within their first year.
Just to be clear, we're on page 41 and 43 for this, for those who are following along.
2-41, yeah.
Yep.
On 2-46, and maybe I'm getting a little ahead of myself, this is more ESDA, so maybe we should wait until we get to that.
I'm thinking we'll go through the whole thing and then do questions.
Okay. We basically moved some money from our other supplies, which is our contingency ESDA money, which is number 549999.
On page 46, right.
It's the consultant fees, and we basically moved that over to, we moved it over to consultant fees to cover issues that we've been having at the Jefferson School siren. We've been having some issues with that siren going out of service. We had our electrical department go over there, put some additional devices to try to figure out what's going on there. There is a potential that we may have to replace the underground line there, so that was one of the reasons why we moved some of the money over. And finally, with the commitment of the mayor, the council, and the city manager, we promoted a battalion chief and a lieutenant and became fully staffed. Unfortunately, we still have one employee that's been on ODI for a while, but we can actually say that we're fully staffed. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, or circle back to get those answers for you.
All right, we'll open it up to questions of council. Alderman Ardini.
Thank you. Chief, I didn't understand what you just said about Jefferson and line 54999. Could you tell me again?
So what we did is, our consultant fees is basically Fulton sirens, and they do all the maintenance and service on our sirens. What we've been having, and we're not sure exactly what that is, we think that it possibly could be an underground wire that has a short. When it's dry out, we don't have any problems. When it rains out, that siren goes down. So what we tried to do is, we got our electrical department over there, put in a breaker there so it doesn't take the siren out of service, or doesn't affect it electrically, and trying to isolate where the problem is, we think it might be in the ground. So we wanted to make sure we had some money set aside for that if we have to retrench and redo that electrical.
But so from this year to next, you've halved the budget. Are you saying that there is, that you moved something? I mean, I'm seeing from $79,000 to $43,000, unless I'm looking at the wrong line.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again?
Sorry, I just realized my mic was off. So if you're, if this is 549999, this year, the budget is $79,000, and the proposed 2025 is $43,000.
Yeah.
So in 2024, that $79,000 included the siren move at York High School. We moved it from a pole up on top of the gym, but what the Chief is talking about, talking about is line item 530100, consultant fees. That's where we've increased to cover the Fulton contract.
See page 2-47 as well.
Can you give me that line item again?
It's page 2-46, 530100.
Got it.
Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually did have a question about that line. So it says in the J form, there's an increase to $21,000 for 2025, but it stays there at 2026, roughly. In fact, there's a slight increase there, so.
It's an increase of $14,000.
Right. From, well, from 2025 to 2026, it looks like an increase of $2,000. But for the consultant work in the description, it says it's for replacing a siren at Jefferson School, so is there a reason why it's still going to be up for a subsequent year, the, that line?
Just, I mean, a lot of this is contingency, just to make sure we have those funds available if there's any problems with any of the other sirens. We've been tending to have a little bit more problems, just as the infrastructure, infrastructure going to the sirens, you know, is getting a little bit older.
So do you envision that more as a permanent increase going forward?
No, we see that as, hopefully, one that we won't have to use, but we want to make sure that we have those funds available in case we do.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. On page 242, 2-42, building improvements. I was looking at the previous budget for the training tower, I'll call it Training Tower Rehab, but it almost seems like it's a training, a new training tower. Last year, the budget was $665,000, and now it's like a 38%, 39% increase to close to $1,924,000.
Which line are you on, Alderman Bram?
Building improvements are, that's 570100, first line on page 242. Could you go into more detail on, I understand that we want to go to a container system, but what was the difference between last year and this year? Because I thought we wanted to go to the container system last year as well. So what is the significant, in my eyes, significant increase?
A lot of this has been research we've done. We've gone to four different departments, looked at their container-type systems, found that the one we were looking at was subpar from what we were looking at. We just got into this container-type system looking at that. We did find a company out of Ohio who is newer to this area. This is kind of their first go-around as far as being in this area. That was a price that we had gotten, which was significantly higher as far as the container part of it. We are hoping to get that number down, hopefully significantly, because we're trying to tell them, hey, we can be your bridge to the Midwest, and they're very receptive to that. So we're hoping to get that number down. One of the other parts of that is the, in which, part of that, we're planning on trying to get grant money through technology and firefighter safety, is the gas props that are going into that container system.
Do all communities have a training tower, or do we share our training tower? Are we unique in this area, in DuPage County, or no?
We are very unique. There's not that many departments that have. More of them are going to this because they can get these. A new facility, brick and mortar, for a training tower right now, for the size that we have, is probably anywhere between $5 and $6 million. These container-type systems can go anywhere from 500 to, you can spend $1 million on them, depending on how many containers and what type of systems that you want to have in there.
And do we foresee this to save us overall, year-to-year, in maintenance costs?
Significantly. There's very little to no maintenance, other than fixing scratches on the containers, painting them, and then washing it out on a regular basis.
Thank you. Third questions? Alderman Toledo and Alderman Irby.
Vehicles, Fire Department vehicles are very expensive. Your vehicle schedule in the KEB is on KEB 107. Yeah, I've been doing this for a little bit of time, and I don't remember buying three new million-dollar vehicles three years in a row. So I think I would appreciate a circle back on some explanation on, you know, what we need, why we need. I see there are older vehicles that are projected for 2025 and 2026. I know we're receiving a vehicle with that grant funding this year, Q1 next year.
Q1 and next year.
Is there a better way of budgeting for, for expensive capital type of vehicles like a Fire Department needs? You know, something that smoothes out the budget? You know, can you just allocate a flat amount and then have the department work within that and figure out how to, you know, maybe you take two years to save up for that million-dollar vehicle, but it's, you know, $500,000, $500,000, and then you buy the million-dollar vehicle in the third year, or something like that? I just, I don't really like the swings. I really don't know how your department adjusts when you have, you know, what I see is, you know, your total budget goes up. Then that has to be absorbed by the general fund, or else, you know, we have these large swings in the general fund. So I'm just wondering if there's a better widget. I also specifically would like to see a circle back on the explanation for the need for those vehicles in those years.
Director Coyle.
Alderman Toledo, one of the ways that you can do exactly what you're talking about is to use an internal service fund, and so there are many communities, for their fleet, specifically, they have an internal service fund where each department contributes their fair share on an annual basis, both for maintenance, their share of the maintenance for the fleet department and the vehicles, as well as what it would be a replacement for those vehicles. So on an annual basis, you would contribute into that fund, you know, one-third or one-fourth, you know, however long that vehicle will last, such that when the vehicle came for replacement, you would have the funds in that fund and then just make that expenditure. So that's one way you can smooth that out from the operating departments, is to use that internal service fund.
What's that called again?
Internal Service Fund.
We'll circle back then.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman Irby.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to, oh, a couple of, just going to quickfire some quick questions for you. The natural gas, where we look at the difference, the explanation, it says liquefied natural gas, so I didn't know we had any LNG use, or is that an act, was that a typo, or do we have LNG vehicles, or LNG devices at the stations?
I'm sorry, what page are you looking at, Alderman?
2, I'm sorry, 2-43, my apology on that, I should have.
I can answer that question. That's just analysis that the Finance Department does to do all of the utility costs, the Finance Department does, and so we just do research for kind of what the predictions are for the market, so it's not really specific to a particular type of fuel, just kind of overall projection of, and again, that's natural gas cost. This is not vehicle costs, this is cost for heating buildings.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. But when you hear liquefied natural gas, that's usually a mobile fuel unit, not something you put in a boiler in a police or fire station. Second quick item is, if I can remember, oh, Citizens Police Academy, when I got to tour the facility with the Chief, we were talking a lot about the problems with the radios, and so in the budget, we have DUCOM, what, 300 and some thousand, whatever it is. And at that time, I believe the Chief and some of the deputy chiefs were talking about, the radios weren't able to hold battery life for a day, and they were not real happy with DUCOM at that point. Has that been resolved? Are we still in the battery insufficient world? Are we still in the, the battery insufficient world that you were in about a year ago, a little bit minus a year ago?
Yeah, that's definitely gotten better. DUCOM has gotten, because of the situation that we're in, they have gotten more batteries, they actually gotten some radios from other, I'm not sure jurisdictions, that haven't been using them, but we have gotten some newer radios and some newer batteries. But what we're, we're being told right now is that by the end of the year, we should have these new radios.
Good news. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just, just to clarify, that's the ETSB that, that supplies the radios. DUCOM's the dispatch agency. ETSB is the one that provides funding for things like that.
Right.
To be clear.
Additional questions on fire? All right. We'll go on to the, well, we're past 10 o'clock, so we'll wrap up for tonight. We will be meeting it as a committee of, as a committee, can't even talk anymore, that's why we stopped at 10. Committee of the whole at 8 o'clock after committee meetings, so committee chairs plan accordingly, and city manager will send out what's next on our assignments. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, one quick clarification question. So, the, the chief did kind of touch on wireless radio and ESDA. Are there questions on that, or should we put that back on the agenda for next week?
We can put it back on the agenda because it's very short.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Alderman Hill, second. Alderman Schenckel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We adjourn. Thank you all for your time.